Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session with the purpose of conducting a strategy session related to collective bargaining with the Boston Teachers Union, as well as litigation related to Mission Hill K-8 Pilot School. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the September 14th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. We will now turn on the interpretation feature. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who's signed up for public comment. Signed up for public comment close today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Again, thank you for your cooperation. Before we move on, the superintendent has shared with me that we have not yet received the last phase report. Therefore, we will be adjusting our agenda this evening with respect to the Mission Hill report. Dr. Eccleston will provide us with some reflections and lessons learned regarding the last phase of the Mission Hill investigation. However, a briefing of the third and final phase of the Mission Hill investigation will be shared at a future meeting. I will now turn it over to Dr. Eccleston.
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and I just want to acknowledge that in our last meeting, I shared in my superintendent report that we would present on Phase 3 of the Mission Hill investigation this evening. Unfortunately, we have not yet received the final report, so I'm unable to present formally on this topic tonight. And I'm hopeful we will have the report soon, which will allow our team to read the report and prepare a final presentation, formal and final presentation, at our next meeting. I also want to acknowledge that this might be frustrating to some of the public watching tonight. I want the public to know that we take this very seriously. And it's important that we have all the information so we can properly inform and engage with the public. Even though we do not have the final Phase 3 report just yet, this hasn't stopped the BPS from beginning to identify and address the system failures that led to the events that are outlined in the Phase 1 Mission Hill report. We will report on the system failures, what actions BPS is taking to remedy those failures to ensure that what's outlined in Phase 1 of Mission Hill never happens again. I wanted to begin my remarks by just sort of framing some of the context here and acknowledge that this is a very difficult presentation and tasked to present and discuss the serious allegations and findings from the Phase 1 Mission Hill K-8 Pilot Report. While the findings of the Phase 1 report do not represent everyone's experience with the school, we learned in the Phase 1 report that there has been significant harm and that that harm has led to compromised trust for too many of our students and their families. I personally believe that accountability alone can't repair that trust, but acknowledge that it's a really important part of the process for us to regain trust with our students and our families. Once Superintendent Casellius and I learned of the allegations at Mission Hill, we've acted with seriousness, urgency, and with the intent of being transparent and honest, no matter how painful, about the system failures that led to the findings in the Phase 1 report. This evening, I will share some of the profoundly difficult reflections intended to demonstrate the lessons learned thus far and to move the district toward new practices, new policies, in both internal and external accountability, so nothing like this happens again in our system. For those who might be tuning in and not clear on the history of the investigation, let me just provide an additional few moments of context. The investigation into Mission Hill, led by the law firm Hinckley Allen, was broken up into three phases. Phase 1 was an examination into what happened at Mission Hill. Specifically, the investigators were looking at examining prior complaints related to the operation of Mission Hill School. They also were examining possible deficiencies in the school's support for students and families, especially for those students and families that were the most vulnerable. We have reported and shared the findings from that Phase 1 investigation. And that report, the Phase 1 report, identifies that there were a number of alleged sexual assaults that occurred at the school, ranging in ages of children from four years old to sixth grade. The Phase 1 report also acknowledges that the school failed to take appropriate steps and actions to address those reports. The Phase 1 report also identifies that pervasive bullying, both verbal and physical, continued to persist at the school and that the school failed to take appropriate steps and actions to address and report. Specifically, there was a failure to address bullying of gender non-conforming students, which led to the persistent bullying of those groups of students. The report also identifies that special education and ESL services were not in compliance. Finally, the investigators found that the Mission Hill had been operating on its own email server and accounts of certain staff members, including the former school leader, had been deleted by Mission Hill employees. At the conclusion of the Phase 1 report, investigators transitioned into Phase 2 and 3. In these phases of the report, the investigators were looking at the adequacy of an action or inaction of both the school Phase 2 and the district Phase 3's leadership team to comport with applicable laws, regulations, policies, and circulars, as well as to generally follow best practices. I'd hope to be prepared to brief the school committee and the larger public on the findings of the Phase 3 investigation this evening, which specifically looked at the system-level failures that contributed to Mission Hill. Unfortunately, that final report has not been submitted to me yet. However, I stand ready to brief the committee on the system-level findings and recommendations as soon as we receive them. In the meantime, it was important to me as the senior-level leader who shepherded the Phase 1 investigation on behalf of the then superintendent and as a leader who has done significant reflection on the Phase 1 report and who has been positioned in my current role to support the district to take action, I wanted to share my own personal observations and reflections from the seat of the acting superintendent. I offer my personal reflections on lessons learned and commitments the district has made or will make to respond accordingly and with urgency. Before I share my reflections, I want to take a moment to communicate that I take the findings of the Mission Hill Phase 1 report very seriously. I've acted with great integrity and with great urgency at every step of the investigatory process, working diligently to be respectful, responsive, and communicative to a whole host of different voices and opinions on this matter. I'm committed to closing out the investigatory process with as much transparency as possible and in a way that positions BPS to fundamentally change and respond to the findings of the report. When I step back and consider what I've learned as a transition from the acting superintendent role and welcome incoming superintendent skipper, there are four areas that come top of mind that must be immediately addressed to ensure that something like what transpired with Mission Hill does not happen again. Strong communication during times of transition. Holding all schools, all employees accountable for following mandates and circulars. Effective, to create effective cross-functional teams and to intervene when we identify areas of risk, even if the school is autonomous. I wanted to spend a moment reflecting on each one of these findings or each one of these sort of personal reflections that I have that I think are really critical for us to consider. As it relates to strong communication during the transition, we have to ensure that there's strong communication between and among transitions in the BPS. It's no secret that there are all too often too many leadership transitions in BPS, and it's critical that we information-share at those moments of transition. We must provide the incoming leader, to the maximum extent possible, all the information she, he, or they need in order to function effectively in their role. I think this is especially true for critical leadership roles, such as superintendent, regional school superintendents, and school principals, among others. As we systematize the way we will organize communication around moments of transition, it is critical that we include briefings on active investigations. While we may not have the luxury of time that we've had with this superintendent transition, the current superintendent transition, from my perspective, is a model for us to explore. In this case, we ensure that the incoming superintendent had multiple transition documents related to core work across the BPS. Superintendent Skipper and I have met multiple, multiple times each day since the moment of her appointment and the moment of my appointment. I've operated under an assumption of no surprises, and I think that's the approach that we all need to take as we think about leadership transitions across BPS. And we've ensured a briefing of ongoing lawsuits and investigations, so the incoming leader is aware. Second reflection that I have is that we have to ensure that we hold all employees accountable for following district, state, and our federal mandates with no exceptions. All BPS employees are now required to sign off that they have reviewed and understood equity, bullying prevention, and mandated reporting circulars and policies. All central office leaders who interface and support schools must be provided professional development on how to look for evidence or non-evidence of follow-through on these mandates and/or circulars and how to act and intervene when non-compliance is found. It is important to me to send a clear and resounding message. All appropriate BPS staff must be on notice that we all must follow district, state, and/or federal mandates, and when we do not, individuals will face job action, including or up to termination. Reflection 3. We have to create effective, cross-functional teams and remove a silo approach that all too often exists within BPS. BPS continues to hold and schedule cross-functional meetings that encourage and support leaders to work together. I think a great example of this is how the system has come together to produce high-quality, cross-functional work as it relates to the systemic improvement plan. I think there are lessons learned of how that work has worked effectively for us as a system, and we need to ensure that we replicate it as we deal with complex problems across BPS. I'm proud that with the, at the direction and with the partnership of incoming superintendent skipper, we've worked to orient our system around a network regional model of support. Our schools are currently organized now, for the first time in a while, around geographic regions, and we have dedicated FTEs that are cross-functional, that are embedded within the context of those regions, led by a school superintendent. And those folks are expected to work explicitly to focus their needs on the, focus their work on the needs of students and families. When it comes to student safety and adult responsiveness to children, it can no longer be acceptable to retreat to your silos, and there must be consequences when that happens. Finally, our work streams that account for all the work that needs to happen, all the documentation that needs to happen, has to be set up so that we're tracking and documenting our work, most notably those complaints and concerns that are coming directly from our students and from our families. And then finally, we have to address the sometime unclear role that autonomy plays in our system, is my fourth reflection. For example, in the Phase 1 report, we read about a server at the school. No school should be allowed to host their own server, and all schools must comply with district systems that allow us to better respond to FOIA and records requests. I'll be working with the Office of Technology to ensure that we move in this direction, as well as with our autonomous principles, to make sure that we respond in real time to this concern. And also, I think while there are some, sometimes some misapplied understanding around the role of central office vis-à-vis autonomous schools, and we have an obligation and a responsibility to put governing boards on notice when we notice or observe practices that are inconsistent with federal, state, or district practices, and we have to do that formally in writing, and we have an obligation and a responsibility to play a supervisory role, even if the district is not the direct supervisor of some of our autonomous schools. For me, when I step back, I respond and think about the Phase 1 report. It illustrates to me the very simple fact that BPS must do better. We must confront, we must confront that as a system, there were a number of failures that led to the events of Mission Hill, and we must move with urgency to ensure a different, more effective path for the future. I'm committed to be working with Superintendent Skipper and her team to deliver on those promises for improvement and to respond in real time to the challenges identified in the Phase 1 report. I also look forward to bringing forward the findings and briefing the school committee and this public on the Phase 3 report as it's available. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Eccleston. And I, although I wish we could have shared information from the final report tonight, I appreciate how seriously the district has taken this investigation and agree it's important that the, that the investigation is thorough and comprehensive and not rushed. When we get the final report, it's important that we share with the public what failures were identified and the steps we are taking to prevent them from happening again. The committee looks forward to receiving a full presentation at a future meeting, including additional lessons learned and next steps. Thank you. We'll move now on to the approval of minutes. Excuse me, I'll back up Mr. Cudah Hernandez.
I just, I have a question. One, thank you so much, and I appreciate the framing this evening, the seriousness in which the district's taking and understanding what happened and mapping a path forward. While the final report is not ready for public release, there, I am curious, in its sort of draft stage, how long there has been a third report?
I saw a draft report, Phase 3 report, about two or three weeks ago, but we do not have a redacted report yet.
And so I just, you know, I want to make sure, you know, while I have not seen a draft report, there is a report that's done, and we, I just want to, like, encourage us with urgency to move forward. The barrier in releasing a final report is getting the reductions done. And, and I just, I want to be really, like, sober about that, and I appreciate the urgency that's, that's being spoken about this evening. But we've now had two or three weeks to move forward with reductions, and we're still here. And so I hope by our next school committee meeting, we are ready to have a much more transparent conversation about what happened and what we will do to move the system forward.
Thank you. Great. Mr. Tran?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Eccleston. With your recommendations, your reflections on the matter and your recommendations regarding how to move forward and your willingness to share the, the report to the public, I think that's the first step that we need to do. I wholeheartedly agree with your recommendations and, you know, your reflections on how to deal with it. What I find is this, that I'm also flabbergasted that some of your reflections were not in effect until now, were not in practice, were not somehow implemented within the school system until now, until now you are making recommendations, particularly regarding the issue of autonomy. My only request is this. Given the fact that we are somehow received most of the information from the administration, you know, from, from, from the staff, and then we make some kind of deliberation, and then we vote on them. I'm now making a request that whenever there are legal issues affecting us, affecting me as a member of, of the school committee, I would like to be involved directly at the onset of all those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move forward? All right, so we will obviously be taking this up at our next meeting. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 12th, August 10th, and August 34th meetings as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, I believe it's July 13th, August 31st. No problem. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Just a quick question. I'm sorry, it's a great process right now. I, on the agenda, it says we're also getting an update on the systemic improvement plan implementation. Is that happening later now, or was that supposed to be part of this briefing?
That will be, I mean, Dr. Eccleston, do you want to talk about when that is happening? Is that going to happen during the superintendent's report?
I'd be very proud to give you an update during my superintendent report.
I'm sorry, I think I'm reading it wrong. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, this was a separate report. This was, the previous report that Dr. Eccleston gave was not the superintendent's report. So we have that to come yet. Thank you. Okay, so we're back to the minutes. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cudah Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the acting superintendent's report. I present to you again our acting superintendent, Drew Eccleston.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to join you this evening. I wanted to begin tonight by addressing a topic that is likely on everyone's mind in light of the incident at Burke High School on Monday. I want to be very clear that violence of any kind has no place in our schools. What happened at the Burke is unacceptable, and we must, as a whole city, work together to prevent incidents like this. At BPS, we have made significant investments to support our young people as we deal with the trauma from the last few years. We have school-based social workers at every school and nine district social workers to support as well. The growth in social work capacity has enabled us to be more proactive and to provide triage support in tandem with city-based agencies, as evidenced by our response to the incident that occurred at the Burke. We were able to respond with district-wide social workers and to collaborate with and support efforts with Project Right and the Neighborhood Trauma Team. This is our common practice to support students, families, and staff. We are also continuing to make investments in building security, like the millions in security cameras, which will be upgraded this year, prioritizing some schools in need of immediate need and updates, and then moving to a multi-year predictable upgraded schedule for the entire district. The safety and security of our students and staff remains our top priority, and I am grateful to the school staff who are on the ground every day, supporting our young people. I know it's not easy work, but seeing our students thrive makes it all worth it. As it relates to the superintendent transition, as you all know, this is my last meeting as acting superintendent. I am so excited. I don't think there's anyone more excited than I am to welcome Mary back to the Boston Public Schools. We are in constant communication, and I'm confident that she will lead with compassion, with joy, and love for our students and for our system. Superintendent Skipper's first, first day back at BPS will be September 26th. Her first school committee meeting as superintendent will take place on Wednesday, September 28th. I was so thrilled to welcome our staff and students last week and this week with our youngest learners. I want to thank all of our executive team, our school leaders, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our nurses, our custodial staff, our social workers, our bus monitors and drivers, cafeteria staff, and BPS central team for all their hard work in ensuring a good start to the school year. Prior to the school year, we worked with the re-engagement center to reach out to students who had been chronically absent. Dozens of volunteers from our schools and our central office and our community knocked on doors and reached out to students to ensure that they would attend school. They canvassed Dorchester, Roxbury, and JP sections of the city. They knocked on 166 doors and reached 77 families during their outreach. On the first day of school, I was happy and so excited to see so much joy around our schools and momentum as students headed back into their classrooms. The mayor and I started the day at the bus yard and continued to Forest Hills to meet with the Orange Line ambassadors, the BPS Orange Line ambassadors, who were out in front of the higher-traffic areas, ready and able and welcoming students and guiding them to their appropriate buses. Lastly, I was at the Matter Hunt School along with Mayor Wu, BTU President Jessica Tang, Chair Jerry Robinson, and others to pass out pencils and to greet the students for the first day of school. Being at the Matter Hunt, which is the same school I started out off last year as I transitioned to the BPS on July 1st, was a really exciting moment for me. There was so much joy, music, dancing, cheering, and even a red carpet to welcome students and their families. The students felt excited to be back at school, and it was evident in everything that I saw. Over the first two days of school, I also visited the Taylor, the Allison Parks, Mildred Ave, the Mendel and PA Shaw School, along with Boston Arts Academy and the Hernandez Dual Language School. It was wonderful to see our students back in the classroom, ready to learn on day one. While visiting Mendel, I had the opportunity to visit the 6th grade expansion hosted by our partners at the YMCA. It was great to see students and staff settling into their new home, and we're really thankful to the YMCA for partnering with us and to support, at least in the short term, the expansion to grade 6. Many of our executive team members went to visit schools across the district, some with our partners on the city council. And finally, it was great to be at the Boston Arts Academy with Chair Robinson and see the excitement of the students over being in their new building, but also the surprise of seeing Big Poppy and Celtics player Grant Williams. What a wonderful start to our school year. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard to welcome all of our students back to school. Hispanic Heritage Month begins tomorrow and will continue through October 15th. Our Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps Division will help to plan activities for the month. During the week of October 3rd, there'll be a Latinx High School competition, along with events that are planned on August 13th and, uh, sorry, October 13th and October 14th. Our Office of Family of Community Engagement facilitated two virtual meetings to share with families how we are prepared to welcome their children back to school. They are promoted, uh, these were promoted via robocalls, text messages, emails, and the weekly parent newsletter. Close to 1,000 parents attended the sessions, and we were able to directly engage with members of the BPS leadership team. They were able to directly engage with members of the BPS leadership team to get answers to their questions about COVID protocols, transportation, information, special education, and more. The new BPS helpline actively supports families through the back-to-school process. The team, which is still hiring, has logged nearly 2,457 calls and emails, both inbound and outbound, with most communication the last two weeks about assignment, transportation, Aspen access, and Chromebook unlocks. I want to personally thank Director of Transportation Dell Stanislas, who works tirelessly on behalf of BPS. I'll note that last night she left work at 2:00 AM. She has been working nonstop to address the transportation issues and innovation that was required to meet the moment, working alongside the mayor, her team, and all the other partners involved. Our main concern is ensuring that our students and staff have a means of transportation to get them to school safely. We have been monitoring our morning and evening transportation numbers. Getting our students safely to school in the morning and returning them home at the end of the day is central to our mission in BPS of making sure every student gets what they need to succeed. Our bus arrival times before bell time and after bell time continue to improve as we see from the data on the screen. We continue to make improvements to our operations and respond to the transportation needs of families throughout the district. Attendance stayed steady during the first couple of days of the school year. We were at 78% on day one and 81% approximately on days two and three. On September 8th, the first day of school, we submitted the second set of deliverables as part of the systemic improvement plan. These documents fulfill our second set of commitments related to student safety, facilities, transportation, and data. All deliverables are submitted and can be found on the BPS website. We consistently are engaging with our partners at DESI and asking for feedback from senior-level DESI staff so they can review our work and that we can make adjustments as we continue to collaborate on this critical systems work. Looking forward, we'll be receiving recommendations from external reviews related to special education, transportation, and student safety later this fall, and presenting the strategic plan for multilingual learners. We look forward to engaging with a larger BPS community around these recommendations as we plan for the future. And finally, uh, this is my last school committee meeting as acting superintendent. I want to thank everyone who helped me during this journey. It's been an honor to be part of this team BPS and to see all the amazing work that is happening. I'm remarkably proud to serve the children and families of Boston, even though I recognize that our organization must do far more to push accelerated improvement. I do see every day, though, that members of our team in the BPS, at the schoolhouse, in the classroom, at the central office, that they're actively working to center their lens on students and families and provide the best possible sport, support to our students, and that has been inspiring to me. We must build systems of support and accountability through the BPS. I will continue to work with incoming superintendent to help shape her vision for the district and to ensure that we make progress on how our system provides the support is necessary and holds ourselves accountable for the improvements we collectively envision. I know that there are a lot of hard conversations ahead, and frankly, I welcome them because I understand that we need to have them in order to repair the wrongs of an inequitable system. It will take all of us working together to achieve the level of quality, excellence, and opportunity that every single child in BPS deserves. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the students and families of BPS in this role. I'm excited to continue to serve in my new role and to welcome Mary in just 11 days, not that I'm counting. This includes my superintendent's report this evening, and I look forward to any questions or dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eggleston, for your report. And before I open it up for questions, I want to express my deepest gratitude to you for providing BPS with valuable continuity and leadership during this interim period. Dr. Eggleston has been working tirelessly to strike the school year strong, implement the DESI Strategic Improvement Plan, and ensure a seamless transition for incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper. While tonight is his last school committee meeting as acting superintendent, we are fortunate that Dr. Eggleston will continue in a senior leadership role as chief of schools and accountability. Thank you, Dr. Eggleston, for your unwavering commitment to Boston students and families. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
That frantic moment of trying to figure out how to unmute early, you know, umpteenth time. Uh, I want to echo Chair Robinson, Dr. Eggleston, thank you so much for your service. I know this is not your last school committee meeting, though, so you're not totally out of the clear, but really thank you and thank you for showing up during a, a a complex time that only became more complex as we had to manage even more complex transportation issues over the summer. So really, really thank you for that leadership. I have some questions as we're talking about back-to-school, which I just have to say has been an incredibly smooth experience for my own child with incredible communication from, from the system. And I know that isn't always true for every family, but that's been my experience over the last week. But I am curious about staffing shortages. Sort of where we are, we heard about some of the vacancies at the last meeting. I would love to know where we are in filling those vacancies. And if you could share that update, that would be great.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have the sort of up-to-the-minute data from today. It's been a busy day. But last time I checked, we were at about 180 vacancies, or teacher vacancies across the system. And we were working with a specific number of schools, five or six schools, that were carrying, from my perspective, too many of those vacancies. And so we redeployed some central office support from the Office of Human Capital, the, the operational leader for the region, and the school superintendent to provide direct guidance and support to those school leaders to ensure that they had what they needed to make hiring decisions in the best interest of students and families. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, we tried to sort of take a, a really close look at areas where we identified that there were concerns. And so some of those areas, based on our disaggregated data, included particularly secondary science positions. And there were a number of different strategies that we took to fill those positions. One, we didn't all call out to retire, recently retired educators who taught science in the BPS to ask if they might be eligible or interested in returning to fill any of those positions in the short or long term. We also ensured that we had the deployment of central office folks who might be in science coaching positions or program director positions to go out to schools to either provide direct service, which is instruction to support those classrooms over the days and weeks to come and/or to provide coaching to substitutes who might be taking those positions, who might be in a first-year teaching position, for example, in the area of science, to make sure that they had the supports that they need during that period of time. And so those are the sort of, sort of approaches that we took. We also took a look at school secretary positions. We thought, we thought that those were really critical positions to the sort of strong start of school. We wanted to make sure that our phones were being answered and that those resources were available. So there were five or six schools who had a vacant secretary position, so we redeployed managerial positions from the central office to the schoolhouse to make sure that those positions were covered across BPS.
Thank you for, for the update. 180-ish is, it's still a lot. And I think we were at a little, just over 200 at our last school committee meeting with the hope that we would be at zero for this one. I'm curious around the communication that families receive when they're not fully staffed. And I'm so, sort of, one, and then two, I'm also curious with hearing the previous strategies around recruitment, some of which clearly have not panned out to bring us down to zero. What is the sort of next step in trying to fill those vacancies? And, you know, I have been like a proponent on using ESSER funds to try to incentivize folks through hiring bonuses. And I know that we didn't, we didn't move in that direction, but are there other strategies that we're using to try to do hires during the current school year?
Yeah, I certainly don't want to do anything to divulge our sort of negotiation strategy on anything, but we certainly have not closed the door to bonuses to increase retention across the BPS and/or bonuses to think about sort of hiring positions potentially in hard-to-staff positions. So that door is not closed, and something we certainly will consider in the days and weeks to come with, with our union partners. I do think, I mean, just to be clear, I don't think in this context, in this labor market, we were ever going to be at zero. I don't, I don't think that that was just sort of realistic. We just look at what's happening nationally. And we have been working doggedly in OHC to make sure that, one, we're like processing the new folks that are sort of coming in as quickly as possible, ensure the requisite, you know, obviously, Cory checks are done and that we're getting people into positions as quickly as possible. I know Ray and her team are working exceptionally hard to make that happen at rapid speed. We're going to continue to make progress on this, and I see movement in many of our schools through the support of the school superintendent, the operational leader, and the OHC to help organize interview processes and making sure that, that teachers who are on that committee are, have the protocol questions and all the support that they need to try to move those quicker at the schoolhouse. And so we'll continue to sort of work through this through the winter, in the fall and winter, and I believe that number will continue to decrease as we move through the year.
Then my final question on, on this issue, is there ever a universe, and again, just not having the data in front of me, where we see schools that have higher concentrations of teacher need? Or is there ever a universe where we are redeploying either existing teachers from other schools to sort of share the burden and working with labor, our labor partners to do that? Or some of these new positions that we have expanded, including some of these coaching roles, so that we have experienced folks in front of our most vulnerable kids?
Yeah, I'm gonna decline to answer the question only because I don't want to signal negotiation strategy in any way, but I will just share that those strategies are not lost on us and things that are under consideration.
Ms. Lopera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to start by saying thank you to Dr. Eggleston for the incredible work, and as a member of Cadet Hernandez has already stated, this will not be your last meeting. You were stuck with us for a while longer. I also wanted to, to share how grateful I am for the many teachers and staff who have welcomed our little ones back into the classrooms. And in my case, I have a new K-1er in a school building who is enjoying their time so much that every night after dinner is asking me if they can now return to school. So I think we may have a future Night Owl school committee member in the making with that one. So just an incredible amount of gratitude for our teachers and our staff for making such welcoming classrooms. I do have a question as it relates to the transportation pieces that you mentioned. Obviously, there are still some challenges and added to those challenges, just the, the operational challenges around the orange line and the transportation system and traffic and all the other really factors that come into that. I'm wondering, as we anticipate the return of the orange line and the shifting of shuttles, I believe we did, we had offered some bus transportation to some students who would typically be MBTA-eligible or who would be getting themselves to school via the MBTA. And so I'm curious to hear from you all with the shifts, with the projected shifts of the orange line coming back on, how this would impact our transportation, both positively or negatively, and what changes we anticipate that would impact students and families?
Oh, I'll start, and then I'll pass it off to my amazing colleague who I see just came off camera. So I think there are multiple sort of questions here that I think are really important. Let me start with what I see in the data that signals to me that we could really not be in a much stronger position than we currently are. I want to acknowledge that while the vast majority of students are getting to school on time, that there have been some significant challenges, particularly on the PM dismissal routes. And those are things that we're working through and are unacceptable. This is the first time since I have been returned to the BPS for, for any day, but, but I think for three days in a row, all of our bus routes were covered. That's extraordinary from where we were a year ago. And if this continues as the impact of the orange line sort of moves beyond us, and we think through that we have all of our routes covered and we have extra drivers to sort of deploy when something happens, we're just going to be in a much better spot, and we're going to ensure that those numbers are really meeting the benchmarks that are closer to the 95% in the DESI CIP agreement. I see data that suggests to me that we're going to be able to move in that direction. The second part of your question was around sort of commitments that we've made, and I think our perspective as a system has been to, to have transition for families is just really too difficult. And so we really want to position ourselves and be prepared to, as we're sort of offering new innovations, to be able to offer those innovations for the context of the year to ensure that our students and families had reliable transportation that they could count on and that they were accustomed to as we started the year. I don't know, Dell, if you wanted to add any details to this or share anything else that you see in the data that suggests that we're moving in the right direction relative to transportation?
I think I just want to echo Acting Superintendent Eggleston here. Right now, what we're seeing in the transportation data and with our continuing to hire drivers, it looks like we're moving in the direction that we should be moving in, as you just said. The last few days, we've been fully covered. All of our buses had drivers, and we had a few extra drivers within the operations to support with like breakdowns and anything else that happened within the operation, which is something that we did not have in the operations for a while. I think with our continued hiring efforts, with the orange line coming back online, one of the things that we're seeing in the data is our trip, trip two and trip threes, like that 8:30, 8:30 and 9 o'clock time, where like we're, we've seen a significant drop in on-time performance in that area, which signals like traffic on the road where that's like really affecting our buses. Usually, we have a drop in that 8:30 time, and we recover for our 9:15, 8:15 schools drop, and then we see our on-time performance recover at our later school, 9:30 schools, but we're not seeing the recovery that we usually see year over year. I think with the orange line coming back online, it would help with traffic, and we'll see more of our buses getting to schools on time. Our routing team is going to be monitoring this very closely to see if there's any slack we can add to the system to improve on-time performance as we go along. I think the work that the transportation team, I know that Drew said thank you to me, but I need to say publicly say thank you to my team. Like, I have, I work with the best team, and my team works so hard every day. Everyone comes to work committed to ensuring that all of our students get to school safe and on time. Our routing team, monitor team, drivers, just the entire transportation team, and I could not do this work without my team, so I just publicly want to say. the entire transportation team, and I could not do this work without my team, so I just publicly want to say thank you to my team.
Thank you.
I just have a quick follow up to that and thank you both for for that, for those answers. As given what our MOU is with DESI and perhaps Dr. Eccleston, you're going to cover this later, but I know that transportation was one of the areas that came up on there. Currently, we're not meeting those benchmarks. And so I'm curious to understand what conversations have been occurring with the state, given that while some of the transportation pieces are ours and historically have been ours, our challenges, we know that there have been additional constraints added to to the start of the school year. So would like to hear what conversations, if any, have been happening at the state level?
Yeah, it's a great question. I will acknowledge that I communicated very explicitly and clearly at the highest levels of DESI, our intention of renegotiating those metrics once we learned of the orange line. I've always made really clear that that was not our primary focus. Our primary focus was to do what we needed to do to respond to the moment and prepare for our students and families, and that would reengage in that conversation as we move forward. Their response very respectfully, and I just want to be really clear that those conversations, these, all these conversations have been productive and collaborative was to sort of just acknowledge that they didn't, I don't think, wanted to reopen discussions around metrics, but just wanted to acknowledge that the feet before us, given the orange line, was likely not going to be feasible to hit those ninety five number, the ninety five percent on time performance, given the challenges that we had with the orange line, but they were going to recognize that for at least the first month or two of school that there would be some hiccups. And we have a meeting tomorrow with the senior deputy super, sorry, senior deputy commissioner of DESI and his team, Chair Robinson and Monica Hogan and I and others from BPS will be joining them. And one of our topics is to begin to talk about this now formally for the first time, now that we've gotten through the start of the school year.
Thank you for that. Appreciate the work on this.
Are there other questions? Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Dr. Eccleston. First of all, let me join the chorus of my colleagues with profound thanks for your willingness to serve and for the thoughtfulness and care with which you have approached this role. It has been a delight to work with you. I think what the public sees in these meetings, the chair and I and others see every single day. Particularly with how you have done this with our incoming superintendent or superintendent designee Skipper, the closeness with which you have worked with her is very clearly sent the message across the ranks in the bowling building and beyond. That this was a time to work hard, that this was not a time for, oh, wait till the new person is here. And so I really appreciate how closely you have coordinated things with superintendent designee Skipper and that you have tackled hard issues, including your thoughtful comments earlier tonight. I appreciate my colleagues asking about transportation and also thank Ms. Dennis Lyles and her entire team, as she pointed out, because I know I've been in that in that room with your team. I know how hard they are all working right now. This is incredibly challenging. Any one of us who are driving around Boston right now, are taking public transportation, are walking or even riding blue bikes, as I have been taking to do in the in the past week or so, know how challenging it is to get around Boston right now. It is incredibly hard and with the addition of the buses back on, it's no surprise that is a challenge, but even the chart that you put up, Dr. Eccleston, that showed the improvements just in a week's time, even with the orange line still down, I think is a faster improvement than we have seen from prior years. So I thank the entire transportation team for their work on this and I know how important is, Dr. Eccleston, one quick question, and I'm not sure if you want to address this in the context of another report coming up, but if you could talk a bit more about school safety right now, which is obviously another key issue at the beginning of the school year and your thoughts on how it's going. I know that you've engaged with the council of great city schools to come up and do a in-depth dive in that issue as it is part of the the concerns of DESI as well. So if you want to hold off and talk about it then, or if you just want to talk about some thoughts you have about school safety right now, how it is going, what you were doing different about it, and you know, message to parents about that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I'll start and I see Chief Cokeley Grace just came off camera and I'm sure Deputy Superintendent Sam DePina will also sort of have some comments. So one, it's my personal belief and it's a belief shared by incoming superintendent Skipper that the most important thing relative to student safety is all built in relationships. If we don't have relationships with students and they don't have trusted adults to talk to when there are issues, there are potentially going to be problems. And so we have to invest at this specific moment in time, particularly coming off of the pandemic and really create relationships with our students, with our families, and that means all of our educators, organizations like City Year and other nonprofit CBOs that are sort of in our schools, we need to ensure that we have our eyes and ears on our students that we're listening to surreal concerns. And sometimes we find that some of the challenges we face might be with students who are new to BPS or new to a specific school. And it's really important that we are building those relationships as quickly as possible. And so it's certainly a piece of advice that I give to to all of our school leaders to make sure that our students are known and they have the types of relationships that are required. We also need to be both proactive and responsive to situations when they develop. I will share my personal opinion, having gone through at least eighty schools in the last year, that our schools are remarkably safe from my perspective. I feel that in our classrooms, I feel that in our schoolhouses, and there are moments where some things happen which have to be unacceptable in the BPS, and we have to make sure that we're responding either in a proactive way or responding with urgency to make sure that that's something like that doesn't happen again. And I think an example of like that was what happened at the Burke earlier this week. In this moment, our systems worked for students though, right? Is that the the adults responded exactly the way that they were supposed to? They followed the protocols and we were able to respond immediately and to resolve the situation as clearly as possible and ensure that there were no future, no further injuries. And so that's the work that we're going to have to do as we're sort of continuing to move forward at this specific moment, really deeply focusing on relationships. And I know that that's something that is at the core of what Mary Skipper believes. Much in over to Deputy Superintendent DePina and Chief Cokeley Grace to add any additional detail.
Chief Cokeley, go ahead and I can end.
No, I just want to reiterate what Dr. Eccleston said. I think it's really based on relationships and I think that that's what Boston has been known for for decades and you know, that was a totally unfortunate situation. I've been in law enforcement in the city now for close to thirty years. And that is always, you know, just very unpleasant. But I think what we can say as a highlight of that is that our partnerships and collaborations, not just within BPS, but without and outside of BPS, help to get a resolution of that situation fairly quickly. I don't want to talk too much about investigation that BPD is conducting, but I can just say that as a result of our partnerships and relationships that we form throughout the the decades in Boston, that the suspect is in 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 custody, the victim is is on the men's to do well in the appropriate administrative practices and policies when the schools work very well. So and we're going to continue that on and not just in in the Burke, but really have that that message resonate throughout BPS system.
And the only thing I would add to that, Ms. O'Neil, good evening, members of the committee and the public, is that in the last meeting, we talked about starting our planning for school opening last May, the beginning of May. And part of that involved doing a lot of reflection on our safety protocols, our operations, our systems, our communication and and our work with Boston Police and other partners. And we spent the majority of the summer working really intentionally on looking at our documents, looking at our procedures, our protocols and doing a lot of updating, streamlining and making very clear kind of what those those are. We also mapped out a large training opportunities that we started in the summer with our school-based staff and we're going to continue those trainings through middle of October to make sure we have plenty of opportunities for folks to understand what we do, understand why we do them, answer questions people may have and just constantly reiterate some of the things we put in place, some of that feedback that we, all the changes that we made involve feedback for different stakeholders. So we created opportunities this summer for some of our public, some of our partners to kind of look at some of our documents, look at some practices and give us feedback on that. And a lot of the documents that we've updated reflect that. And we're going to spend the rest of this fall engaging in training, updating the community, what to expect. And that's kind of different than what we've done in the past as well. So we're confident that, you know, again, our school is safe, but unfortunately, when incidents do arrive, we do have the systems and response in place to be able to respond both during the incident and then after the incident as as students return back and we support families as best possible.
Thank you for that. Superintendent, could you just reflect for a minute about, and I appreciate the work that was done during the summer? And could you reflect for a minute about the concerns expressed by DESI? And again, if you want to hold this to later, that's fine, but also what the council will be looking at and you know, what you envision could be ways that would help with confidence of the safety of our schools?
Yeah, thank you. And I apologize. I missed that part of the question that you had asked earlier. As part of our systemic improvement plan, we are required to engage in an audit in three areas. One of those areas is student safety. And so they'll be focusing on the sort of protocols, systems and structures and the student supports that we have available in the district. In advance of that, in advance of that that visit, the the BPS is required to submit different documents, our emergency plans, the sort of some of the the structures that Sam DePina just spoke about around sort of the protocols that are supposed to be in place and the processes. They'll review all of that information in advance of coming to the BPS, hundreds and hundreds of pages of different documents. And they'll come out and they will interview key stakeholders. They'll make observations out at our schools. And their job is a team of people who sort of are experts within this area from different other other urban school districts around the country will take stock of everything that they learn through this process, the document review, their observations, their interviews and make a set of recommendations. We are required as part of the systemic improvement plan to 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 report on that publicly to share this sort of more broadly and to engage in a conversation with the school committee about what actions and next steps will happen as a result of that report. I I don't remember the exact dates. I apologize, but it's somewhere around Mary's first week or second week here in the BPS that the Council of Great City Schools will be on site to do the safety, the student safety audit.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I look forward to continue updates on that as we get recommendations and findings from them.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Hi. I want to just go back to some of the the staffing questions I was asking earlier, and I think there's, I just have two more. One, I just didn't get an answer to. I want to see if I can. I'm curious what communication is going out to families who where their student doesn't have a permanent teacher? Is that happening just on a school level or is there some sort of central communication? And then I'll hold on.
There is, there is communication that's required by state statute or regulations around communicating to families around if there is a teacher vacancy or an unlicensed teacher. I apologize. I don't remember the date by which that needs to happen, but I certainly could have Superintendent Skipper follow up on this at the next school.
Perfect. And maybe that leads into my my second question. I'm hoping that for our next meeting, we can have a more robust staffing update. I'm curious to sort of know where the concentrations of need are and what grade bands, but also particularly what schools, what content areas, what grade bands, but particularly what schools. And then I'm also curious to just get a much sort of heartier update around our Plan B efforts around those schools, including any central redeployment or or other things that are happening sort of outside of of labor negotiations, but sort of in real time in order to get qualified teachers in front of our kids.
Yeah, I'll certainly pass on that feedback to Superintendent Skipper and she'll work with Chair Robinson to identify whether or not there's time on this upcoming agenda or a future agenda to dig into some of those questions.
Copy. I hope, given the sort of back to school urgency, I hope that we can make that.
Thank you. Mr. Sketchings, did you want to make some comments before we moved on?
Thank you for allowing me. No, I'm all set, Chair. I just wanted to reassure member Cadet Hernandez that Superintendent Skipper and I have been in close conversation about sort of a redeployment and a re re-energizing our efforts around continuing to staff and getting as close to zero as possible. So we have been talking about it. It is not lost on us and we will make sure you get your robust update.
Thank you. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Gracias, señor presidente, y muchas gracias, señor Dr. Eckerson, por su trabajo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Eckinson, for your great job.
Yo tengo una pregunta y es con relación a las medidas de seguridad que ha establecido el distrito.
I have a question about the safety measurements that the district has taken.
Ha sido una que generalizada de los padres desde el año pasado que han estado pidiendo al distrito que pudieran las escuelas. Muchas de nuestras escuelas necesitan mejor calidad del aire con ventilación adecuada.
It's been a generalized complaint from the parents asking for a better air quality in our schools.
Entonces, mi pregunta es la siguiente. El año pasado, el año académico pasado, se había hablado de poder tener carpas para usarlas como para que los niños coman afuera para para no propagar la la pandemia, ¿verdad?, y para mayor seguridad de nuestros niños. Entonces, ¿cómo cómo estamos con las carpas? Están haciendo cuáles son las escuelas donde se van a llevar las carpas? Estamos trabajando sobre esto porque hasta ahora no he leído de que hayan empezado a hacer las carpas para que coman afuera, para que puedan usarse de comedor. Y también me gustaría saber las escuelas donde ya han hecho esos cambios de los filtros, que han puesto los filtros adecuados, si tiene la lista y nos pudiera edificar sobre eso.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but I sometimes I have to be taking a lot of notes for Rafa. So okay, my question is, last school year, we were talking about having tents in the schools for the children to be able to eat outdoors for COVID safety and all that. I haven't read anything about that and I would like to know what's happening, what's the status of those tents? And also I want to know if we can please share a list of schools that have implemented the better filters for air quality and the monitors. I would like to have that list, please.
I will turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Sam DePina.
Thank you, Dr. Eckerson. And gracias, señora Palanco Garcia, para preguntar. The the quick answer is this. We learned over the period of COVID that it was necessary to make sure we put in place more permanent opportunities for us to be able to lift up tents and take down tents seasonally as the weather changes. So and we understood the need to spread out as much as possible during lunch. So we did differently last year, or the middle of last year was we put in place a bid to secure a contract to be able to lift up and stand up industrial tents seasonally. So that way, during the fall, during the spring and summer months, we're able to put up tents where schools request them that needed them. And we've been able to do that successfully this year. So if you go around to some schools, the schools that have them are the ones that ask for them, require them and requested the the use for them. So they're available for schools. We also work with schools individually to develop meal plans and how to spread out. So different schools have different plans on whether they eat both inside and outside, just inside, inside and cafeterias and in the classrooms. So we work closely with them to 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 figure that out. And we can get you a list of schools that have the MRF thirteen filters and then we are continuing to to have that practice in place.
Thank you.
Denada.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I just want to again say thank you for the schools that, over the last couple of days that I've been able to visit, who have happily showcased the fact that they now have air conditioning. And that alone has made a critical difference in a number of schools. I know that we have many more to do. But I can just want to report back that those schools that have received air conditioning are quite grateful. So thank you all for getting that work underway. So if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the acting superintendent's report. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion to the motion? Very nice. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins. Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lopez.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 12 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. And please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Mike Heishman, followed by John Mudd, Lisa Jean Graff, Alicia Hicks and Ruby Reyes. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Heishman.
Three minutes. Wow. Gosh, that's great. I'm going to leave you some extra time. Mike Heishman, Dorchester Beja. Does the Boston School Committee oppose racism? Desi is a racist, colonizing, and given the discussion that took place earlier today, a bullying institution. The primary method that it uses to evaluate schools is the racist MCAS system. Most of the schools that Desi has deemed to have failed are predominantly inhabited by black and brown children. All colonizing efforts have failed to improve our children's education. The latest Desi outrage is that it's decided to raise the scores needed for our children to pass the racist MCAS test in order for them to receive their high school diploma. This is awful news for our children and their education. What will the school committee say and do about this latest racist bullying attack? As a first step, I request that the department do a study on the effects of this new policy. The United States was not prepared for COVID-19 and has done a terrible job in managing the pandemic. Corporate profits are more important than human life and public health. The billionaire class profits while low income people of color suffer the most. Over a million have died in our country and 400 to 500 people continue to die every day. Many survive with long COVID and many will have permanent disabilities. Mandates are gone. The message is get back into unsafe workplaces. Get back into unsafe schools and good luck. On August 31st, you announced the BPS COVID policies for this year. On September 8th, over a dozen organizations demanded that you take stronger measures. On September 9th, you welcomed our children and the virus back into unsafe buildings, insufficient HVAC systems for most of our schools. Safe distancing, long gone. Mandatory masks gone. You are not doing enough to protect the health, safety and lives of our children and those workers who love and educate them. You must do better to protect our children. That is the number one priority is the health and safety and the lives of our children and the people who work, who love and educate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My next speaker is John Mudd.
Did I make it?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, sorry. Maybe I'll get my technological proficiency better at some point. So welcome back. But before we get totally engulfed in the details of schools and reopen, school reopenings and the responses to the Desi MOU, I want to take a step back and highlight again, some of the BPS's stated long-term priorities. Achievement gaps among blacks, Latinos, Asians, whites, English learners and special education students were not included in the MOU, nor was teacher ethnic and language diversity. Both are official priorities of the school committee and the district. People have told me they weren't, however, discussed at the Leadership Institute this August. If the performance of blacks and Latinos is not at the forefront of our concerns, what does that say about our real commitment? I would suggest that you ask the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force to review the MCAS data for 2122 when it is available and present you with their analysis and recommendations for action. Paralleling that, I would urge you to ask for a report on MCAS achievement gaps from the superintendent and staff where, as I earlier recommended, reports should be divided a third on data, a third on lessons learned and a third on recommended actions, which you can then discuss. On a separate issue, you know that as a member of the ELL Task Force, I have repeatedly argued for the importance importance of access to native language as the best way for English learning students to learn academic English. You have made access to native language BPS policy and district staff has said their number one priority is access to native language. But data the ELL Task Force recently received showed that over the past four years, there has been a decline of about 1,000 students in single language SEI classes, where students and teachers are supposed to be grouped so that they can use native language to improve learning. This represents a decline of about a third of the total students in those classes. At the same time, there's been an increase of almost as many EL students assigned to general education classes. This reality is exactly the opposite of what a policy promoting access to native language would lead to. The ALL Task Force warned to get stumping from EL programs into general education, but that is exactly what has happened despite the rhetoric. You have to stop this. As our education leaders, please keep your and our focus on the priorities we say we believe in, including achievement gaps, teacher diversity and access to native language. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Jean Graff.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Lisa Jean Graff. I'm a member of Boston's Fed PAC and I live in the Fenway neighborhood. Currently in BPS, parents of disabled students are told about many possible supports and services that the district can provide for their child. However, not all options are shared in detail with all families equally. Also, the district has some biases in what information they decide to share, promote and withhold. This often plays out in what services a child receives and the class placement they receive. Moving forward, I have a couple, I'm sorry, sorry. Moving forward, I have a number of requests. First, all options that could benefit a disabled child's specific needs would be shared with their caregiver at an IEP or 504 meeting. This would include the benefits of lesser known options like opting out of ABA services as well as inclusion classroom placements for students with high needs. Second, caregivers would be given resources that would allow them to connect and learn from the disability communities that their child is a member of. Third, parents and staff would be educated about the neurodiversity movement, which is an important disability rights movement. With this framework in place, disabled students would have access to preferred curriculum, have physical access, have sensory comfort and be respected for their unique neurotypes. Fourth, all of these options, resources and information would be included in the district's new Special Education Policy and Procedure Manual. In addition, community feedback could inform this manual and district policies too. My hope for the next year is for disabled students to have more options and for caregivers to be given information about the benefits and concerns of all available options. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Alicia Hicks isn't signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Ruby Reyes, followed by Elizabeth Ferens, Allison Friedman, Jess Manah, La Prima Dunn, Rachel Young and Lauren Peter. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Ruby?
Yeah, my name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. As a new school year has started, Beja continues to be concerned with the lack of communication and transparency to families and students. Mass emails and mass emails are not enough of a communication source. The Boston Public Health Commission has been reporting trends of COVID spikes after vacations and holidays, such as the post-Labor Day weekend that was also the first week of school reopening. FAMCOSA has been advocating for the use of masks at these, at these first few weeks of school. Clearly, there is a discrepancy between BPS, following the Boston Public Health Commission's data, and implementing mask policies during these crucial times of COVID surges. In addition, FAMCOSA has continued to push for upgraded ventilation systems outside eating areas when weather permits like now and consistent communication with families and school communities. The need to implement a mask policy the first few weeks of schools underscores the need for BPS to make data-driven decisions that benefit student and family health and safety, rather than those based in politics. The incident at the Jeremiah Burke School on Monday underscores the need for more mental health support and restorative justice practices across the district, not just in some schools. Students and families have long been pushing for this before the pandemic. It also underscores the desperate need for staff training and support for ensuring restorative justice practices are committed to system-wide. Beja also once again asks that you communicate with families and be transparent with school communities about changes in their schools and meeting their needs. We have a new mayor, new superintendent, and yet the systemic improvement plan feels like a checklist, rather than a commitment to systemic improvement and including families in these plans. As we enter a new year with new leadership, please stop perpetuating the BPS culture of weaponized ignorance and prioritize decisions based on the health and safety of our school communities. You can do things differently than before and we need you to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ferens.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ferens. I'm a Rosendale resident and a co-chair of the Sumner Family Council and parent to a second grader. I'm coming to speak to you again this evening about the experiences at the Charles Sumner Elementary School. I'm the first of five parents who'll be speaking from the Sumner tonight. I also want to point out that our Sumner community has reached out to a network of parents at the other schools BPS has proposed to merge, the Clap and the Russell and the Shaw and the Taylor. While I will focus my remarks on the Sumner, I've heard the same issues about a lack of transparency, lack of community engagement and lack of responsiveness from BPS staff since the murders were proposed in May to those six different schools. As you all already know, we were not initially given a sixth grade for 2022, 2023. After months of negotiations, we were told we would be able to expand to a sixth grade. And then after months of being told we'd be going to a BCOF space, we were told we'd be going to the Irving. This made it very difficult for everybody to plan. It also led to many of our families not even knowing we were going to expand and have a sixth grade even in June. And we knew that the Irving building plan was a one-year plan and thus we have been told is part of the reason for the proposed merger between the Sumner and the Philbrick. As we've already stated repeatedly, no equity analysis was done before the merger was proposed. This is a violation of BPS's own racial equity planning tool. You have to include stakeholders in the process of crafting proposals. As parents, we have conducted our own independent analysis and this suggests that the merger will further segregate the Rosendale Public Schools. The merged school will consolidate the vast majority of Rosendale's BIPOC children, English language learners and low incomes children into a merged school. We've repeatedly asked BPS to do its own equity analysis. We asked this in meetings with district staff on May 26th and July 6th. We asked in emails on July 20, on June 29th, July 22nd, August 4th, August 19th and August 21st. We have asked in front of the school committee three times before tonight. To date, we have only received an incomplete RAPT and there has been no actual community engagement. Analysis is not valid without engaging stakeholders. We talked about this proposed merger on June 15th and on September 9th in family and community meetings. The vast majority of families were shocked by the news of the merger. The one meeting that BPS held in May was not substantial to let the families even know that this proposal was happening. The families had no idea. They were highly concerned about a long-term two-campus school and they didn't understand why this specific merger was being proposed. BPS has not done the work to show that this merger is equitable. I ask that you, as a school committee member, join us in demanding a full equity analysis before you vote on our merger. Community engagement at this time is not possible before the November 2nd meeting. And I ask that you delay the vote on the Philbrick-Sumner merger and I would suggest the other two mergers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Friedman.
Okay. Hi, I'm Allison Friedman, a Charles Sumner mom and a Rosendale resident. The BPS needs to explore other options besides merging us with the Philbrick. This merger was originally proposed as a solution to find space for Sumner's sixth grade. We would like to make sure that this is the best solution to that problem, which means exploring other options as well. For instance, we think that we might be able to fit in our own building for the 2324 school year. Based on publicly available data, we calculated our average attrition at each grade level over the past five years. Then we did some long-term enrollment analysis and found that if attrition remains at current rates, we might be able to cut some gen ed classrooms by the 2324 school year. We have also looked into cutting some specialist space temporarily. We passed on all of our analysis to BPS in the form of detailed spreadsheets and asked them to analyze the possibility of remaining in our building using their much more complete enrollment data set. BPS's response was that they said we won't fit in our building based on analysis done over three years ago before much of our attrition. They gave a link to the analysis. I have requested access to that file four times over two weeks and have not gotten access. And if it is the analysis that I remember from that time period, it was just a counting of classrooms from a map, not a detailed spreadsheet. it was just a counting of classrooms from a map, not a detailed spreadsheet of enrollment data like what we gave the district. This data and analysis is essential because if we can fit in our building, then there should not be a rush to merge us, especially because it seems like the merger would cause inequities in our neighborhood schools and limit options for changes in the future. We have asked for numerical analysis on these two possible outcomes and for better enrollment data than what is publicly available so that we can do our own analysis many times in a meeting on July 6, August 31, and September 12. We have also asked for it in emails on June 29, July 12, July 22, August 4, August 19, and August 21. I think it also was asked for this past Tuesday when there was a meeting. And we have still not seen any analysis that says whether we will fit in either scenario. And thus, we cannot share what options are available with our own community. BPS has not done the work to show that this merger is the only option for fitting our sixth grade or been transparent with the data that we would need in order to do that analysis ourselves. I am asking you, as school committee members, to demand that BPS analyze whether the Sumner-Philbrick merger is the best option for us and whether we could actually fit in our own building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jess Manna.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jess Manna, and my daughter is a K-1 student at the Charles Sumner Elementary School in Rosendale, and we are Rosendale residents. Imagine my surprise when, just a few days before school started, I attended a meeting where I, for the first time, learned about the proposed merger of the Sumner and Philbrick schools. As a parent, I am extremely concerned about the lack of transparency the district has had with this process. Instead of enjoying my daughter's first week at her new school, I've spent the last several days getting up to speed on the merger, talking to parents, and trying to grasp what the district could possibly be thinking. The Sumner was not only our first choice when we entered the lottery, it was the only school we chose. We chose the Sumner for many reasons: the diverse school community, the incredible level of parent engagement, the before-and-after-school program, and the diverse and experienced teaching staff, and all of the support, specials and support offered. We have been shown the proposal for the 23-24 and 24-25 school years and the impacts it would have on our amazing staff and the specials and support that brought us to this school. It brings the Sumner and Philbrick communities from 42 classrooms to 37 and then 35 classrooms. This is a loss of, at minimum, seven teachers. This number does not even consider the redundancies that would be created with other staff: PE, music, theater, art, family liaisons, and social workers. These are the people who touch the lives of every child in our communities, and their losses would be harmful to our children. Of course, the proposal also does not consider the impact of a loss of income for a valued teacher in Boston, but then. We have to wonder, has the BTU been involved in these merger discussions? And has the new BTU contract and the impacts of inclusion done right adjustments been weighed against combining these particular communities? We value our faculty and staff. We see this merger negatively affecting them, and we do not see how the district has planned to mitigate that harm. We ask that you, as the school committee, demand that any proposal addresses these staffing impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is La Prima Dunn, followed by Rachel Young, Lauren Peter, and Sharon Hinton.
Hello, my name is La Prima Dunn, and I'm a parent of a Sumner student, second-grade student. We have been told that the long-term plan for Green New Deal is to have elementary schools of 500 to 700 kids. So most schools in Rosendale will need to merge with someone over the next several years. We have also been told that all the buildings that schools will land in long-term will need some amount of renovation in the next several years. Central Office has told us that they will begin neighborhood-wide conversations about where we will end up later this fall, but no date has been set. If the Philbrick and Sumner merger goes through, then there are less possible long-term configurations. You then force some other mergers down the road, and they have no say in the process. If the Philbrick and Sumner merger goes through and our communities don't get assigned to the Irving building, we would have to go in three buildings: Bates, Mozart, and Conley Buildings. We would end up with four moves into the Irving this year, merge with the Philbrick next year, move to the third building scenario, and then back into our original buildings. Each move requires significant mental and physical work by our administration and teachers. Families and students have to learn new routines and work out the logistics of pickup locations. The potential financial and social-emotional impacts of these proposals on our populations needs to be weighed equally, if not more, against any BPS budgetary benefits. We have been asked, sorry, we have asked for a full neighborhood plan to be formulated in meetings on May 26 and July 6. We have also asked for it in the emails on June 26, July 22, August 4, August 19, and August 21. We have also spoken about this before, three times before in the school committee. We were, we were asking for a plan for all the moves and mergers and renovations that their plans are well in advance. It's something that Washington DC was able to offer their community before starting their major facility overhaul. That is much larger and more complex. This is a much larger and more complicated city, so we don't see why BPS can't provide us with the same thing. Basically, BPS has done the work to figure out how this merger fits in the larger scheme of merger moves and renovations for Rosendale. Has not, I'm sorry. Let me do that over one more time. BPS has not done the work to figure out how this merger fits in the larger scheme of merger moves and renovations for Rosendale. I ask you, as a school committee member, to demand that BPS, does this work before you vote on this merger? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Young, I'm a mom to a third-grade Sumner student. I'm also an architect, and I specialize in EEC-certified schools. I'm actually one of several architects that have that expertise that are also parents of the Sumner, and we have all attempted to collaborate with our peers at the Green New Deal team to little avail. Just, just to give a few examples of the experience we've had with the Green New Deal staff, I've been disinvited to site meetings a half hour before their start. This summer, we were told that the entire Green New Deal staff had COVID and couldn't attend a Zoom meeting. That was three hours before that meeting was to start. My fellow parent, who's also an architect, put together an analysis of trailer classroom locations for the sixth-grade expansion, only for BPS to pass his work off as their own at a community meeting in their slide presentation. Concerning this proposed merger, BPS is similarly not done its homework and researched all possible alternatives to a merger. Rather than performing this basic due diligence, they instead are asking us, Sumner parents, do it for them. But, at insult injury, BPS will not share the critical information that would enable us Sumner parents to do this research ourselves. Even though it's not our responsibility to do this research, we've taken on the task. We would expect, since we are actually helping BPS staff do their jobs, they would be forthcoming with the relevant preliminary analysis and data we need. But surprising to no one, after so many disappointing interactions with the superintendent's team, the Sumner community has received nothing from BPS. We have asked repeatedly in writing for enrollment data and classroom space studies for the Sumner and the Philbrick. We have asked in writing on multiple occasions for comparative analysis, including supporting data that BPS used to conclude that this is the best option for our two schools. In July, we asked for the Irving feasibility study. After first being told that this was not publicly available, in September, we were given a redacted document that admits omit. How can BPS conclude that the best solution is to merge the Sumner and the Philbrick when they themselves have not looked at other alternatives in any depth? It is fiscally irresponsible that BPS has not researched and compared all options. It is deeply offensive that BPS then foists this responsibility on parents. It would also be irresponsible for you, the school committee, to rubber-stamp BPS's recommendations without having the opportunity to review a comparison of all options.
Twenty seconds.
Please hear our criticism and take this responsibility of ours, of yours, rather, to heart. Concerning the merger between the Sumner and the Philbrick, the Green New Deal is recycling old ideas. I learned in elementary school, when in doubt, throw it out. If you question whether something can be recycled, better to toss it in the trash. I question this proposed merger, and you should too. Members of the school committee, toss this merger proposal in the trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Young, excuse me, Lauren Peter.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm a Rosendale resident, Sumner parent, and a family council advocacy chair. I'm here to wrap up our testimony tonight and ask you to consider what we've lost in this process. We had plans for this year before the announcement was made about the merger. Our SSC had plans to focus on the enrichment, enrichment to the programs our school offers, clubs, further knitting together all of our various strands. We have sped SEI, general education, and inclusion. So all of our students have the supports that they need. Our family council wanted to focus on building community, making sure that our executive committee reflects our student body, welcoming our families back and getting ready for our Fall Festival. Our administration should be laser-focused on the fact that we have a new sixth grade, and we have the complexities of two campuses right now. We have new staff, we have new administrative staff. These are all things that are incredibly hard to deal with, and we should really only be focusing on this. Our families and students should be focusing on the fact that we have a whole new school year. Our students are either starting school, or they have new grades. They should be looking forward to our open house, which is on October 6, and not the meetings that we have to hold to educate them on this matter. They should be meeting new friends, making connections, not considering entering the lottery and going to different schools because a two-campus solution between the Sumner and the Philbrick is really just logistically impossible for a lot of families. It's already hard for some of our families to make the transport between the Irving, older Irving building, and the Sumner work. The Philbrick is across some major roads and a lot farther away. And so the idea that we would have to make things work with same pickup and drop-off times between those two campuses is really scary to a lot of families. We have spent time educating people already this year. Everyone we've talked to had no idea what we were talking about. We are doing BPS's job, talking to our community, and letting them know what is going on. We've met with BPS, we've met with the Philbrick community. We're working hard on presenting a different proposal, but again, all of us are parents with full-time jobs. And we don't have the data that we need to really present the proper proposal to you. So I ask that the school committee delay your vote. Allow us more time to pull something together. We've been trying to get your attention for months, get BPS's attention for months, and we really don't feel like we've been listened to. We'd like for this process to be done right and have a whole Rosendale community conversation about how all of these mergers will happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Our final speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, Executive Director of Black Teachers Matter, mother of a BPS graduate, former BPS student, educator, and community education activist in Hyde Park Home Order. You know, it's so easy to criticize, especially when you're not in the firing line. And those of us who have been doing this for a while see the cracks in the dike with all fingers and toes, trying to stop what we see has been happening for far too long. So before I comment, let me just say thank you to those in all levels of Boston public schools, from the cafeteria workers and bus drivers to superintendents, the school committee, Mayor Woo's administration, DESI, BTU, all the parents, students, advocacy and community-based organizations that have tirelessly tried to make BPS and academic outcomes better. That being said, after all the assurances by BPS and TransDev at the last school committee meeting that we were on track for the first day of school, approximately 50% of the buses on opening day of BPS were late, a major issue of the DESI MOU and a significant issue in delaying BPS receivership. Within the first three days of school, a student was stabbed, an early reminder of incidents last year. And I heard too many stories last Friday of teachers scrambling to provide transportation for students whose parents couldn't in the absence of promised school transportation. One of the worst feelings experienced as a parent is waiting for your child after school, and your student doesn't exit the bus, and no one knows where they are, and you don't have numbers to contact to find out where your child is. Echoing another school committee member, what are the current numbers on teacher vacancies and hiring, especially Black and Brown teachers and administrators, special ed, bilingual, and STEM teachers? What measures are being taken in schools with multiple vacancies? What schools are we talking about? What are the demographics of BPS leadership in terms of the racial equity lens? And how is recruitment and retention of BIPOC educators and administrators faring along the recruitment efforts? 190 teacher vacancies are a lot, and research shows one teacher can make a difference in a student's life, especially if it's a Black teacher by grade three. It has a direct impact on graduation rates. What is happening with the BPS teacher training pipeline program? And over 70 participants currently in the program are being released by the program. How are the restorative justice practices and the evidence regarding the school-to-prison pipeline and reform going to move forward and not revert to police in schools while balancing security concerns? And finally, but obviously leaving out so much, can some type of public dashboard be made accessible without a code, special handshake, or insider information that will respond to the many queries that are presented to the Boston School Committee on a timely manner? And BPS, that may negate or augment the need for waiting for sometimes hours and testifying at the school committee meetings and hoping to be heard and answered while juggling helping with homework, preparing dinner, preparing for the next work in school day? We know what the problems are. We've known for a while. The COVID pandemic only exacerbated what's been happening for decades in some situations. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm here to help, but I tell you, it's difficult finding out up-to-date information. If you want trust, parents, you need transparency, accountability. Tell us the truth. We can handle it. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first and only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $959,498. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions on grants? There are no questions. I will entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Credad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Colanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grant's approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first and only report this evening is a tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union. As you know, over the summer, BPS and the Boston Teachers Union reached a tentative agreement that takes major steps forward on key district inclusion policies and practices. The agreement will put students' needs at the center of inclusion policy in the city of Boston. I will now invite Senior Advisor Megan Costello to please present her report. And first, I will invite Acting Superintendent Eggleston to give opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to members of the public for your
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to members of the public for your we're proud to bring forward a tentative agreement that was earlier this evening ratified at the Boston Teachers Union. And we think that there are many different components of this contract which are good for our students, good for our families, and good for our educators. Specifically, I think, as Chair Robinson noted, I think it is about fundamentally approaching our work relative to inclusion in different ways and in making really important adjustments from feedback from our families and for our students. I'm really proud to be bringing this tentative agreement forward. I want to thank so many people on the BPS negotiation team and to just acknowledge that our negotiations with the BTU were always rooted in doing the right things for our students. While we didn't always agree on every aspect of this work, I think we came through this process in a much stronger place, really listening to the feedback of our educators around what needed to be true relative to assurances to ensure that we do inclusion right. And so I'll turn it over to Megan Costello, who in many ways was leading the district negotiations in partnership with our labor attorneys from the BPS as well as from the city of Boston. Thank you, Senior Advisor Costello.
Thank you, Dr. Eggleston, and good evening to the members of the school committee. This negotiation was a real team effort, and I want to begin by thanking that negotiation team. We are joined tonight by, I just elevated you, Dr. Jeremiah Hassan, the Director of Labor Relations, our leadership team in the Office of Special Education, Lauren Viviani, and Ethan Delamont Burns, David Bloom, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Ray Catchings, our interim Chief Human Capital Officer, Dr. Eggleston, who joined us in his role when he was the Deputy Superintendent of Academics, but continued in his role as Acting Superintendent. And I also want to thank the numerous departments that contributed to the consultation of understanding different parts of this contract, specifically the multilingual and multicultural education team, Department of Technology, and Human Capital, and many more. I also want to give a special shout out to Chair Robinson, who joined us for nearly every meeting, even those late nights, and helped us really persist through some challenging moments. And also want to thank Mayor Wu and her Senior Advisor Lou Mandarini. Lou joined us for every meeting, and it was the mayor's commitment to the additional investments that was significant to us reaching this agreement. I think some believe that negotiations are contentious and adversarial, and there can be difficult moments, but what's important to recognize is that both the BPS and the BTU have a shared interest in supporting our students and staff. We always have that common ground to begin from, and that's where we began with this negotiation. There may be disagreements on the how, but there is never disagreements on the why in the first place. You can pull up the slideshow now, and I'll go through some of the details of the contract. For the district, our priority with this contract was about how we write language that supports strong student outcomes. I'm excited to share the details of this contract with you this evening because I believe we have a contract that is truly transformational for all our students and provides the opportunity for the district to work in collaboration with our union partners, so all of our students can thrive. Next slide, please. The tentative agreement is thirty pages long. I won't go into every detail of it tonight. But I did want to highlight a couple of key pieces outside of the inclusion language that we'll dive into in a little bit that really helps us retain and attract a diverse and talented workforce. And I'll also go in, as I said, to a detailed overview of the new language on inclusion, which represents significant strides to meet the needs of our students and families. Big priority for us was paid parental leave. We know that this helps attract and retain our workforce. The new paid parental leave language in the contract mirrors the city policy. But we did take into consideration that our workforce is different and how it's different from the city. For example, in the city policy, you know, you must work a minimum of one thousand two hundred and fifty hours to qualify. We've made an adjustment to say a one thousand two hundred and fifty hours or the proportional standard hours because we know with our work year and the number of hours some of our lowest wage employees work, they, if they take one or two personal days, they may not qualify for those hours. So we felt it was important to offer to all of our employees, so we made the adjustment to the policies where needed. We also came to agreement on offering two religious holiday days. The existing contract language is specific to certain religious holidays. And we felt it was important that no matter someone's faith, they have the option to take a day to observe their religious holiday. For our ABAs and paras, we provided them with tuition reimbursement to further their education as well as laptops, so they have the technology in our ever advancing world to support our students. And for teachers, we provided up to three thousand dollars for the cost of obtaining another license that may be required for their job. These are just some of the benefits in this new contract that will help us attract and retain that workforce. You've received the full tentative agreement. It was voted on tonight and ratified by the union, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But on the next slide, we're going to dive deep tonight into the complete overhaul of the inclusion language in the contract. As we think about serving our most vulnerable students, there was existing contract language that we perceived as barriers to providing some of those services for our students. I cannot stress enough how monumental it is that in partnership with the union, we have a complete overhaul of the existing language in the contract. And we really started with a shared vision. In agreement, you'll find a much more, in the agreement, you'll find a much more detailed version of that vision. But the main point is this. Inclusion is fully delivered when all students are educated in the least restrictive environment and are provided access to a full continuum of services to meet their individualized and special needs. Inclusion is not a place or a program. All classrooms in the Boston Public Schools must be inclusive. This vision really guided us because there was agreement on this vision. But what we negotiated was, how do we get there? And the assurances that the union needed to know that this vision can be a reality. We negotiated on the input from educators, the financial resources that will be needed, and the planning time to do this important work well, while also providing the flexibility the district needs. The next slide, please. I'm going to share with you tonight how we will transition to a completely inclusive district. The current language will sunset over time as we create inclusion plans for each school. And these are the topics that we're going to dive a little bit deeper into this evening. Next slide, please. A critical part of the negotiation was, how can we ensure educator input in, you know, becoming an all-inclusive district? We came up with school-based inclusion planning teams to ensure that important educator input happened at each school. So each school will form an inclusion planning team, and our Office of Special Education is already working with a number of schools to build their team. And each school and its students that they serve is unique. So inclusion planning teams will provide a critical service by making a plan for each individual school based on what that school and its students may need. There will likely be very many similarities throughout the district on these plans, but each school will be unique. The teams will work in partnership with their school leader, the instructional leadership team, families and community members, and many more to make recommendations about the resources needed to implement the plan. And to do this work right, it will take deep planning time. So members of the team will be provided with up to two full days of substitute coverage to conduct walkthroughs, classrooms observations, and to meet and plan and address concerns as they come up and and plan out the inclusion for the for the school. And they will also be compensated for the additional hours, up to fifteen hours outside of the workday. So this really addresses how educators will have voice in this work and also the time to do this work well. Next slide, please. Another critical area for the negotiation was how we can provide the assurances that the staff and the financial resources that are needed will be provided. So multiple licenses came up quite a bit. Dual and triple licensure will not be considered a sole source delivery model. Of course, we encourage and want teachers to get additional licenses. But a concern for the BTU was that everyone with a special education license or an ESL license would be asked to do more without the additional supports. So this was a big priority for the union. The teacher of record will be responsible for all outcomes of students in their class. But the district will ensure that we have the right accommodations, whether that be pull-in or push-out services depending on the student's IEPs and what they need. So this really moves us from a district that is disability-focused to a district that is individual student need focused, and that's really significant about this new language. Adding the additional staff support will cost money, and implementing the plans at each school will take time. But a concern the union had about not having the financial resources to do this work well was alleviated when Mayor Wu committed significant funds to ensure we have what we need to be successful. We're thankful to the mayor and to the city for supporting our students with this commitment. And lastly, a coach, specialist, facilitator, director, coordinator will be at each school focused on supporting the implementation of these inclusion plans. And we have a variety of titles there because it's going to be different for each school depending on on what they need and the type of specialists that they may need to support that work. On the next slide. Another critical area was ensuring that teachers and educators have time for training and planning. This is really critical. We can write all the plans we want, but if we don't train our staff and and plan implementation well, then it won't work. So all staff will must participate in professional development related to inclusion implementation. And we added two additional hours of professional development specific to inclusion planning. And we'll compensate our paras to participate in professional development. As you know, paras play a critical role in supporting our students, so we want to make sure they have access to the same professional development. As for planning time, if a teacher who meets the requirements for serving a student's IEP using both their general education or ESL and special education license, they will have an additional forty-eight minute planning block. And if that planning block can't be fit into their schedule, they will be compensated for an additional forty minutes, forty-eight minutes outside the school day. And where possible, we want to ensure that the teacher of record has time to plan collaboratively with other educators and support staff who may be working with students in their classroom. So we're really going to try to be intentional about creating that space for our educators. Next slide, please. So on class sizes, we've broken it down to three columns that will be in the contract to be intentional about creating smaller class sizes for our highest need schools. Overall, the majority of class sizes will be reduced as we implement the inclusion plans across the district. Classes will not have more than forty percent students with IEPs. The federal limit is fifty percent. And classes that have more than thirty percent of students with IEPs will be provided with extra supports. As we, as I have said multiple times throughout this presentation, the needs of our students are unique. So the supports that will be in those classrooms will also be unique and specific to what the student need is. So it could include extra para support, special education teacher support, or any other, you know, resources or or district supports that they may need. And caseload for our resource teachers is also something we're continuing to discuss. We are really having a conversation about caseload versus workload, and we are asking the inclusion working group to review this and to make a recommendation. So we know that, you know, not all cases are the same, and some are more complex and, you know, use up more time. And so we want to make sure that we're measuring things in workload, not just caseload. And next slide, please. And finally, the last point that I want to lift up about the the new language on inclusion, and there is much more detail, and I encourage everybody to take a look at the tentative agreement. But the school committee is going to form an inclusion working group. This really gets back to the assurances that our educators wanted to make sure that they had. So the inclusion planning teams will make the plans for our schools. We'll work with the district in collaboration with school leaders as well. But the school working, the inclusion working group will really be a place where concerns can be elevated. And the group will be fifty percent appointed by the BTU and fifty percent appointed by the Chair of the School Committee. The working group's decisions will be final. And if there is a tie, it will be broken by the school committee chair. So this is really an important checks and balances, I think I heard our school committee chair say during the negotiation to ensure that, you know, there is voice in making sure schools have what they need. And so that is our last slide for this evening. I want to again say thank you to the BPS negotiation team and say thank you to our union partners, especially BTU President Jessica Tang and so many from the BPS BTU leadership team who were at the table. I also want to thank our families and BPS community, the implementation of this new contract language and more broadly, the work we have to do to transform our district. It's going to take our whole village. Families and community members must have a voice at both the school and district level as we move towards becoming a district that reaches our vision. Inclusion is not a place or a program. All classrooms in the Boston Public Schools must be inclusive. We ask that at our next meeting, you vote to approve this contract, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Costello, for your report. And thank you to the BPS negotiating team for their hard work on behalf of our families. And you said that they did ratify the contract this evening, so that we will have, well, thank you to Jessica Tang and all of the BTU negotiators, as well as all the negotiate, all the members in terms of taking the step forward as we begin to dig deeper into this work of becoming a fully inclusive district. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Ms. LaPara?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Megan. I know that you've been working for a while this. I have a question that I want to uplift because I know Dr. Alkins had also brought it up, but I know he is not in the room at the this moment regarding what community engagement looks like as it relates to the proposed working group, knowing that fifty percent comes from BTU and fifty percent comes from the chair. Would just love to hear an overview of the thinking around how we ensure that not just school committee kind of voices are represented or BTU voices are represented, but really that those that are most affected, students and families are engaged in the process.
Sure. Thank you for that question. The inclusion working group is just one way that we will have community and family voice. You know, the the Chair of the School Committee is going to be fleshing out in the coming weeks and days here what that exactly will look like, the number of members, you know, who will be part of it. But I do want to, you know, I think I made my last comments here about the voice of families and community, and it's really at the school level, too, where that's incredibly important. And so the school-based inclusion planning teams will be asked to work with their school community. And we will work with our partners on sped pack. We will work with our our partners in the city of Boston. This is really, you know, the inclusion language in the contract is one piece of the work that we have to do to really transform our district. And as I said, that is really going to take the whole village of BPS, probably the city of Boston, if I'm being honest. And, you know, we we talk a lot about inclusion as it relates to our students with disabilities, but it's beyond. it's beyond that, too. It's, it's really ensuring that every student, you know, has, has voice. And so we'll be probably speaking to everybody about this.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I just have one more question. Clearly, this was in common in many, many, many conversations with folks as a part of the Boston Teachers Union. But I'm curious to understand what engagement we had with school administrators, just to understand the alignment of where teachers were asking for certain things and also knowing what some of the students and family needs were. So what, if any, engagement with administrators that we have?
Yeah, sure. We pulled in school leaders from time to time at either the negotiation table or, you know, for input and advice and guidance on certain aspects of it. There were a few of them that I think I had on speed dial, right, that really were well-versed in the contract and very helpful. So it was an important part of, you know, the conversation throughout.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Carden Hernandez.
I have a few questions. Thank you so much for your work, and I think I think this is incredibly exciting. I, I, I think you sort of alluded to this, but the previous contract language concerning folks with disabilities was at times offensive, and I think, you know, it goes without saying, but it just, it wasn't enough and stopped us from achieving, but also in many ways was quite humanizing for people with disabilities. So I'm excited to see that that language is going to change and then the mindsets that we need to create in order to realize real equity will also be shaped by some of these changes as well. And I so, and before I go into a question, you know, you said this piece, which I think is really important, right, like inclusion, it's not a place or a program, right? It's a way that we think about people and learning. It goes beyond just like the operational structure of classrooms, right? It's about a celebration of disability culture. It's around identities and histories, culturally relevant curriculum to folks with disabilities. And so there's so much more than this contract will do, but this seems like we are on to something through a real justice lens that I think could be transformative, not about inclusion, but actually about belonging to a community. Something that so many folks with disabilities oftentimes leave a traditional school experience not feeling. So I'm excited about that. I have a few questions and I'll be mindful of my time. One, we, you talked about, and I had asked this question previously too, around the sunsetting of the contract, the previous contract language. And obviously, in a spirit of urgency, curious from the sort of BPS lens, while it leaves sort of a window of, of on some level perpetuity, right? Like, what is, whenever someone's ready is when it sunsets. I'm curious, as a sys, as one of the system leaders, like, when do you think we will, every school will have a plan for their model? And yeah, like, what is the, what is the real timeline, understanding that it's going to look different for different schools?
Thank you for that question. I think it's, it's really important, right? And there is real urgency to this work. And it's something our, our team at Central and I think certainly our, our colleagues at the BTU understands. So the transition language does read that, you know, there is a transition period. And the last sentence is until such time as new inclusive class designs are implemented. So that really speaks to the inclusion plans that each school is creating. And when there is an inclusion plan that is implemented, that is when the existing contract language is no longer relevant to that school district. It is my hope that all of the inclusion plans will be implemented, you know, by the time we're ready to negotiate our next contract, which probably will begin in about a year. And, you know, we're really ambitious about, you know, doing this work across the district. You know, it is important to do this work right and to do this work well. And so that is where, you know, the financial resources, the investment kind of upfront in the support staff and other resources that we may need as well as, you know, really thinking about the timeline for implementation will all really matter. But I think we're all really committed, including our, you know, our colleagues at the BTU to ensuring that this new contract language is the contract language going forward.
Copy. Thank you. A second question, and I'm just, you know, I'm curious how this connects in conversations with educators across the system. I have often heard, for example, like an educator saying, like, I know this young person needs to be in a class that's collaboratively team taught. And I can't put that in an IEP because my school doesn't have it. IEPs are an annualized process. And so right now, you're, this is sort of where I'm, I, you know, the sort of planning to the reality of a young person who's in a classroom. I'm working on a young person's goal. We're working on building an accurate, an affirming IEP. Am I writing an IEP that is reflective of what a student needs? So many educators have shared that, like, that's not the state of play in the current structure. Or am I waiting for my school to tell me what we offer? And how does that, how do you reconcile those two issues? Given that, you know, the process doesn't just start on a day, right? Like, this is a continuous process that is, that is annualized.
Sure. And I invite any of my colleagues that are the academic experts to certainly weigh in here. I see Lauren just turned her camera on. Lauren, do you want to speak to this question?
Sure. Hi, thanks for the question. I think that this is going to be an ongoing process as we're thinking about IEPs and segmenting them from this year to the future planning processes. I think that certainly going to look different for each school, at least in the beginning, as the inclusion planning teams come on board. And we think about how do we provide a full continuum of services across the, across BPS in a variety of schools. And I think it's a really exciting time because it's, it gives us some really good opportunities to be creative about how we're providing services and what those look like. And then writing the IEPs to match the services as we get better and better at this. And yet, making sure we maintain individuality for students and for school communities across the city.
I would just also add to Dr. Viviani's point about the continuum of services and how important that is in terms of this plan. And what I also want to amplify is some comments that committee members made in this discussion, which was around the involvement and the partnership with families. So as we are changing IEPs, that process is incredibly important to make sure we are partnering with our families to ensure that they understand what the changes are and why working towards least restrictive environment for every student is what we need to strive towards.
Follow-up question there, as there is so much autonomy then given to schools to build programs. And I'm sort of curious on two levels, sort of the central oversight piece, but also like, how do we stop? And with, with often bad intent, like, and that's just the reality, and that's the experience of folks with disabilities. So like, I'm going from that sort of place of harm. How do we stop schools from saying, we don't offer this program? And to create when it's, when, when the central system is not defining what programs need to be offered?
So I really appreciate that question, especially given the context that Acting Superintendent Dr. Eccleston started the evening with. We must, yes, we want to ensure that autonomy creates innovation and results in what's best for a school community. And that needs to be preserved, but at the same time, we cannot allow harm to be done when IEPs are not followed. And when we are not ensuring that the continuum of services provided for every student, that is the goal of this. And what is good about this is the system, the, the systems that are involved in ensuring that we have checks and balances. And those are things that we've already started to do to ensure that no child is turned away. There isn't a difference in terms of the, the tension that you created also, what are expressed about the, what we have available versus what we know is best. That should not be a trade-off. Any educator or any family has to engage with. And so as we move forward with these inclusive plans, and that's also why we're starting this first year with 20 to 25 schools in a cohort to be able to work together. As Ms. Costello said, we want to do this right. But we also want to make sure we do this with all deliberate speed because our students deserve this.
And then I want to be mindful of my time, but I'm going to ask one more question. And I have a list of questions, so I'm like choosing my question to say, see what I'm. I'm curious, from a central level, does this change the sort of enrollment mechanics that happen once schools design programs and define the types of classrooms they have? A 12 to one-to-one that's collaboratively team taught or a general education class that's collaborative team taught, or whatever the sort of model that is coming out from each design. Is the enrollment system then aware of the classes and the spaces available? Or is this, a student gets to the school and the school is then figuring it out based on the sort of the normal enrollment cycles and processes?
I'll start and ask Dr. Viviani to provide additional details. One of the things that you're hitting upon is an area that we need to do better in in terms of the enrollment piece. Part of the Council of Great City Schools, they, they came to really give us some feedback. And, and I know they're looking forward to giving the school committee a full presentation of their findings and recommendations. But that is something that is coming up in terms of how we as a system need to confront how we've identified students and the strands that are currently occurring. And also how that plays out in distribution across a school as well as autonomous choices that are being made. All of those things converge into areas of reform that we need to make within the system, and this contract helps us accelerate this with the partnership of the BTU.
And my, is there a timer? Because I don't, I'm not seeing.
Mr. Carden Hernandez, I'm going to give you some extra time because you are the member of the committee who brings the most knowledge about special education. So your questions are helping all of us understand more about how this will work. So tonight, I'm going to let you know that you should go forth and continue to ask your questions on our behalf.
Chair, I'm sending you flowers. Okay, so my next question here is, does this, as we're thinking about, and maybe this is what you were alluding to, Dr. Chen, as we're thinking about the sort of future of the system, we know there is an unequal distribution of vulnerable children across schools. That creates higher concentrations of need, which creates real complexity in how schools figure out even just operationalizing supports to different complexities, right? I'm curious if this is, if the plan is then not just to allow this school-based autonomy, which is really important in design and, and obviously getting buy-in from a round for bottom up. But also to also move the system to a place where we are also creating thresholds around what constitutes an appropriate number of students with complex needs in an individual school so that we can best serve those needs. And that is, I think, connected to the enrollment question I'm asking. It's like, we're creating because the unintended consequence is we are creating unique programming across different schools, asking families to unpack and discover all of their options as they're then going through another complex process of ranking schools they want to go to. And sort of where does the enrollment system define who goes where and how much is enough?
Yes, we have definitely been, and I know Dr. Viviani will want to jump in a little bit because she's been in her, in her time here too, diving into where we see high concentrations of students with disabilities. And it exactly addresses what and, you know, bolsters what you're speaking of. I think the other piece that we are working on is also ensuring that students are getting high-quality services and programming close to home. We are very aware of and concerned about the long travel time that some of our students with disabilities have. And that is why it is critically important that all schools are able to provide the full continuum of services. And, and that is something that we are definitely looking at in a very intentional way because there are clearly inequitable opportunities to access programs close to home. Lauren, did you want to add anything else?
The only thing I would add, I think, is, is the distribution of kids with disabilities across greater schools is, is, is like, it warms my heart to think about how how we're starting to, to think about that in a different way and what a great value that's going to be for the school community. And thinking about really looking at differences as a strength. And I think that's just like the hearts and minds kind of of the of the, of the project and the kind of the redesign that we're doing in Special Ed, so that that touched me.
I, because there's, you know, like with any good contract, it, it will allow us to do like workforce changes, but there are like, it doesn't stop at the school. Like, there are central improvements to how we think about disability justice and how we transform a system accordingly, that I think, you know, I'd be like remiss if I, if we just said like, and this contract's great, but there's, there's work that has to happen on a school level, and there's real systemic change that has to happen centrally in order to like realize the best version of that contract. The, the last question I have here is just around the inclusion working group. And then the way that I understand it is that there it is a body that will allow for school-based issues that can't be resolved at that level to, to be escalated and then resolved accordingly, right? And particularly around, I don't know, design issues. Is this a fair assumption?
Dr. Eccleston, I see you have your, your.
Yeah, I would say that that is one function. I don't know, senior, that is the primary function of the team, but certainly that is one of the sort of intended design decisions in collaboration with the BTU. We really wanted to make sure that there were assurances and there were checks and balances. So that if, if issues could not be resolved at the local level at the schoolhouse, those questions could sort of funnel up to the, to the working group. But more broadly, that group will be setting inclusion policy in collaboration with the district and also look for sort of evidence and data around implementation and be responsible for updating the school committee on that work. Similar to the way that some of our sort of joint steering committees or task force work, that this is a, a body that's looking at the sort of overall system level implementation of inclusion. One small function of this, which we hope will be sort of very rarely, that they'll be bubbling up school-based issues to be resolved.
And is there language built in or was it discussed and just not in the contract around the time where resolutions would need to be made? And this is in the spirit of urgency, but like, how long can a problem carry on for?
Yeah, that, that was discussed. And, you know, we, we, I think we wrote in a little bit of a blur now, but I think a minimum of 10 meetings a year, right? But like, there has to be something around, like, if there is urgency to solving a problem, we can't be like, we'll talk about it next month, you know? So, so we're going to have to really be very intentional about, you know, trying to be as planned as possible. you know, trying to be as planned as possible with this. Um, and maybe there are particular times, like, you know, during budget season, right? That we should have more meetings or things like that. But I, I do think that, you know, Dr. Eccleston put it really well. Think about this as like the inclusion planning teams are school-based. And that's the BTU and the, and the families and the school leader and other members is planning for that specific community. The inclusion working group is planning for the district and supporting those inclusion planning teams, um, with problem solving and any other things that they may need. We also, I didn't highlight it in the presentation tonight, but we do have also an inclusive education liaison, which is a, a, a joint position between the district and, and the BTU, which will really help, um, guide that inclusion working group and really keep their ear to the ground on, on what is happening. So it is, you know, I think you said it really well, like it's not just this contract language that is going to transform this. We have to be intentional across the district and we have to really think about the places for collaboration. And so these are some of the systems that we've put in place for that collaboration to be intentional.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Mr. O'Neil.
Here, I, I don't have a, a question because, um, I agree, this is very much about the inclusion work and I appreciate Mr. Cardad Hernandez's questions. He does have deep expertise in this and that's what we bring to the table, right? We each bring different things to it. So, um, I would ask the, the financial cost of, uh, the contract. Ms. Costello.
Sure. Uh, and I do believe we have our, our chief financial officer, Nate Cruter with us, but I can just quickly highlight, we've agreed to, um, a three-year contract. And each year there will be a 2.5 base wage increase. Uh, in addition to the 2.5 base wage increase, we have also accounted for an additional 2% over the three years. It'll be 0.5 in the first year, 1% in the second year and 0.5 in the third year of additional compensation on the base wage for the implementation of this inclusion work. We know that this inclusion work is going to, uh, take a lot of effort and a lot of time and a lot of energy. And so we're, we're compensating for that piece as well. Um, in terms of the total numbers, um, I do believe in the appendix. Um, we had the, the cost out. So, and, and Nate or David can certainly correct me here. I'm not, I'm not the money person, not the person you want managing the money.
When we do take a vote on this at the next meeting, we'll also be taking a vote on the supplemental appropriation necessary to then move to the city council, as is usually the case when we vote on a contract. Okay. So we'll, we'll have more details on that. So this was more a comment than a, a question because Mr. Carden and it is focused in quite a bit on, on the key issues, which I appreciated and learned from. And that is, first of all, certainly in my time, um, on this committee, this is by far the most involved. The chair of the school committee has been involved in the contract negotiations. Chair Robinson was incredibly involved in, uh, sitting in, in almost every single session with, with the teachers' union. And I'm deeply appreciative of her, of her work and her commitment and her time and effort to do that, to understand it and explain it to the rest of the committee members, uh, including myself. So thank you, Chair Robinson, for your leadership on that. And I think that did directly help in particular during a time of a lot of transition going on with, um, Dr. Cassilius leaving. And she was deeply committed to trying to get a contract signed, um, before her time ended. And then Superintendent Eccleston, thank you for your work on this. And incoming superintendent Skipper, I know she was, um, certainly consulted, um, as this was being wrapped up as well. So thank you, Chair Robinson, for your leadership on that. I also want to thank the entire negotiating team on this, including, um, city halls, a lead labor negotiator, um, who joined and, uh, was, uh, worked very closely with the, there was great cooperation here between the city and the district and deeply appreciate that. And also Ms. Costello, your work on this as well, um, was instrumental in getting this done. So I heard from a number of people who are in the room between Ms. Robinson and yourself and members of the team, the contact, uh, the, um, content experts that you brought to the table every single time. And also to our partners at BTU and helping to get this done as well. So thank you to President Tang and, and I know she represents her members extraordinarily well, but is also deeply committed to trying to improve conditions at Boston Public Schools for all of our students. And it's a great working relationship we have with, um, President Tang, who by the way, was on the superintendent search committee and worked hand in hand with us on that issue, even as these negotiations are going on and, and did a wonderful job in separating those two because she is deeply committed, uh, to our youth as we are as well. So, um, it's, it's a nice situation to be in where we're all, uh, working in the same direction for our youth. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Costello, on behalf of the team from the district who worked on this. And thank you, um, to our interim superintendent, uh, Eccleston, um, for your leadership on this as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. You know, it's, it takes a village, right? Chair Robinson. And, uh, it was, it was a lot of fun.
It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Mr. Cardet Hernandez, this is your night, so.
I, I will have more. I'm going to review closely and I'll before I, I vote. The last one I have is just around the double licensure piece. And this, like, you know, everyone was smart to put this in, uh, because it's a thing that urban school systems often do, which is like, uh, allow that sort of double dipping and, and, um, and then, you know, kids lose services. There is a time and a place that a double license makes sense and it works and it does, it gets the job done. And oftentimes it doesn't. I'm curious about the, there's clear language, um, that says it will not, necessarily count as, as the sort of the service. Um, but it may if it's appropriate. I'm curious about the process on a school level, um, to, to either grieve a decision that doesn't feel appropriate for a kid and was sort of what, uh, sort of what avenues schools will have to make sure, um, particularly educators will have to make sure, um, that kids are getting the right services. And if they feel like the system is not working in favor of kids, um, that they can create accountability.
Yeah, I think there's a few places, um, you know, and, and we had a lot of conversations about this because it's a question of like compliance versus like providing students with what they need, right? And we want to make sure, are obviously in compliance, but we also want to make sure we're providing students with the services they need. And it, each situation will be unique. This is where the inclusion planning teams are not just like formed for one year and they write the plan and then they go off. They will be a continuous group that will continue to be engaged in problem solving at the school-based level. The inclusion education liaison for the district will also be a person that will help us problem solve. The inclusion working group, I mean, we hope to not have to have these, we've set these formal systems up, right? But this is a collaboration and this has to be a conversation. Um, and a, a real open dialogue about what our students need. And we will see that in our student outcomes. If our students are getting what they need, right? And that was why our goal with this contract language was writing language that allowed us to get to a place of where we continue to have stronger and stronger student outcomes. Um, and so, you know, there will be lots of conversations on the, on the school-based level, but there are, are also systems in place to elevate those concerns if need be.
And my real find, oh, go for it, Dr. Eccleston.
I just want to add one point to this and I think it might be just echoing from previous comments, but I, but this is really important to me. Is that I think what we know about the research about schools that move the academic needle for students is they have something in common, which generally the vast majority of them have problem solving cultures at the core of what they do. And I think what we're trying to do is through this contract is to create sort of reform to ensure that there are systems and structures at the school level that are supported centrally to make sure that really smart educators, really smart families, um, you know, really smart sort of service providers are coming together to really problem solve for the needs of students. And we believe that those decisions are best done at the local level. And, um, and I, I really hope that we can, and I, and I really appreciate that in our first cohort of about 25 schools, I'll be going through this work. Like those first few, um, sort of consulting and support meetings are really about building out the inclusion planning team at the local level, because that's where the problem solving is going to happen.
Yeah. And it, I, you know, to, yes, to everything you're saying, and then to, to be able to allow for that sort of strategic problem solving and then to resource the solutions is like, you know, is, is the best that we can do. And it, it looks like we're really invested in resourcing the solutions. It goes back, not to be a broken record, Dr. Eccleston, but we are experiencing a national staffing crisis and of, of educators. And what I suspect some of the solutions will be is a need for additional educators, um, across our classrooms, particularly in a collaborative teaching model. Um, and I'm just curious, and maybe this is for a, a later conversation, but as we move towards that, the, the, the success we will have will also be in a recruitment and retention strategy, uh, that will allow us to bring in, uh, additional folks into the workforce. And so, um, I don't know if maybe at a later date, we can have conversations around how we ramp up that strategy earlier and, and what it will look like, um, what the partnerships will look like with local universities, et cetera, to, to bring in talent, because we'll need it in order to realize this.
Yeah. And including like obviously retention bonuses, but also thinking about incentives for our pathways, programs and other, um, professional opportunities that are going to help our educators grow and to develop the knowledge, skills and competencies that are required for the multiple types of roles, um, that educators need to play.
Yeah. And I, I'll just add, I think that's why really, you know, the, the two focus areas of this contract are, you know, components that help us attract and retain a diverse and talented workforce. And, you know, major reforms on how we're, um, you know, providing that continuum of services for students. You have to do both and all of our systems are connected to each other, transportation, hiring, right? Like all of this stuff matters, um, the facilities work. And so we, you know, this is where we have to work, uh, cross collaboratively as a district to ensure we're providing everything for our students.
Thank you, guys. This is great. This is something.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we will move on and we look forward to taking action on this at our next meeting. Thank you again so much. We'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comment on reports.
Right. Thank you. Is there any new business?
Chair, might I just say one thing if that's possible? I just want to, I meant to say this in my superintendent report, I just wanted to communicate, um, to the community, two really important events, um, that are coming up. One, um, the Boston Teachers Union is hosting a back-to-school book fair on Saturday in the afternoon on September 24th at Carson Beach. Uh, and with our union partners, the Boston Public Health Commission is whole, hosting a vaccination clinic and booster clinic at the book fair. So just wanted to let folks know the opportunity to get some free books and to also if you need to, to get, um, boosted and/or vaccinated. As well as the city in collaboration with BPS and other, uh, community agencies is hosting a vaccine clinic in partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission this weekend, September 17th from 11 to 3 at White Stadium. And there'll be incentives such as gift cards, $75 gift cards for anyone who gets their vaccine or booster. And there'll be, um, community events and games all outside. And so just wanted to encourage our, our, um, our community members, our educators, et cetera, uh, to attend one of those two events.
Thank you. That concludes our business for tonight and the next remote school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday. I mean, sorry, will take place on Wednesday, September 28th at 5:00 PM. And we will be welcoming our new superintendent at that time as well. So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objection? None? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you and have a good night.